Oh, I believe, well, I know I start the reorganization meeting. Here we go, I'm far enough away. So we will wait and do the pledge of allegiance when we start the actual meeting. Okay. We had two seats open and had five people running for those seats. Before we go on and talk about the results, I would like to take a minute to recognize a very special person here tonight. Mrs. Joan Hook has served eighteen years as a board member here at Saint Gen R2. So she's gonna go on and pursue some new adventures in life. So do you want me to turn it over to you? Do you wanna talk?
I can't, I just have a little thing. I'm gonna read because, you know, I'm just gonna be emotional, I have a feeling, but I'm not gonna pretend that it's easy to lead this group of people. I've worked with many of them for my entire tenure on the board. I know firsthand how hard they work for the district. This Saint Gen R2 district is led by a group of outstanding administrators who I'm also going to miss working with. I wanna thank everyone who has supported me over the past eighteen years. Gosh, I can't believe how hard this is gonna be. I've been humbled with each election and appreciate the confidence in me and will never forget the outpouring of support that I've received. I'm moving on to another calling, one I hope I'll be successful in. I do believe we can achieve great things with God's help. I will always support the R2 school district, for I will always be a dragon. Thank you.
Thank you. We love you gentlemen.
Thank you.
And so we have some notes of appreciation and thanks for you to open the box. And then there is a gift there from the district, so I don't know if you wanna open it now or later.
Should I open it?
You can open it.
Yes. It's wrapped so pretty.
Yes. Yes, Jerry Falls did a very good job wrapping that.
Thank you. I'll have to read all that later. My eyes are off here.
Did I want to torture? We need to wait now. As I say, you may need some help.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Oh my gosh. Beautiful. I'll miss you too.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you so much.
How do you measure time?
There are a few things to apologize, but I just wanna thank you all for serving the community and our school district for the past eighteen years. Even beyond that, for serving as the board vice president, for putting kids first in all your decisions, keeping what's best for kids is your top priority, for proudly reading so many Saint Gen High School graduate names as they cross the stage, no matter how difficult it might look. And ultimately, just being an excellent board member with a huge heart for kids and a tough skin. School board members past and present have a lot to be proud of in this district, as do students, staff, and citizens. And Mrs. Hook is certainly an invaluable contributor to all our district, has accomplished and continues to accomplish. She will certainly be missed by all of us, but we hope to continue to see her around on campus.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, here we go. With the approval of the county clerk's certification of the April 6, 2021 municipal election results. The official results of the April 6, 2021 election are enclosed. The county clerk has certified these results. The two candidates receiving the highest number of votes are Geraldine "Jerry" Diesel with 547 votes and David M. Bova with 617 votes.
I'll move to accept the official results of the April 6, 2021 election and declare Geraldine "Jerry" Diesel and David M. Bova as elected directors to serve through the term of Board of Education of the New York School District, Number R2, Saint Gen County, Missouri.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Or is I supposed to do a roll call?
Roll.
I don't think so. It doesn't say that we do.
No.
Okay. So, I guess that means we need to bring Mrs. Diesel up.
Ready? Can you see? Ready?
Yes.
You two, raise your right hand, point your feet left for me. I, state your name.
I, David Bova.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
In the Saint Genevieve County R2 School District.
In the Saint Genevieve County R2 School District.
County of Saint Genevieve, State of Missouri.
County of Saint Genevieve, State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability, according to law.
To the best of my ability, according to law.
Next, before we do the election of officers, I'd ask Mr. McDaniel to read Policy BDF, School Board Member Cupids. So he's going to read through this, and then when he's finished, we're going to have everyone sign and date it. It's just a new practice that we're going to do, and MSBA is suggesting that way it's read once a year publicly and everyone knows what it says. Okay? So, Mr. McDaniel?
Members of the Saint Genevieve County R2 District Board of Education, accept the responsibility to improve public education in the Saint Genevieve County R2 School District. To that end, all board members will remember that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending the public schools. Obey the laws of Missouri and the United States. Recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak or act for the board. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies. Delegate authority for the administration of schools to the superintendent. Encourage ongoing communication between board members and stakeholders. Render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups. Make every effort to attend all board meetings. Become informed concerning issues to be considered at each meeting. Improve boardsmanship by studying educational issues by participating in service programs and training. Support the employment of staff members based on qualifications and not as a result of influence. Maintain a process of regular systematic assessment of educational system in order to provide accountability for the school district. Avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. Refrain from using their board position for the benefit of family members, business associates, or themselves. Express personal opinions, but once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority. And refrain from divulging confidential information presented during closed sessions, except when required by law.
Thank you.
Sign and date, April 2021.
And then when you're ready, I'll gather those up and... Just on this line, please. That's fine, like, just somewhere on the bottom. Date. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item, we have election of a board president. I'd like to nominate David Bova as the president.
I'll move that the nomination ceases to be elect by acclamation.
Okay, I have a motion and, well, a nominee and a closing. So, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Bova. You are the board president.
Thank you.
And I will turn it over to you, because you do a much better job.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations.
Thank you. We have the election of a board vice president.
I'd like to nominate Eric Bowzler for vice president.
Move that the nomination ceases to be elect by acclamation.
The second one, the cease. Anybody second that motion to cease? All right. We have a nomination for Eric Bowzler as vice president. A motion and a second to cease elect by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Bowzler.
Yes, congratulations.
Next, we have the election of a delegate for Missouri School Boards Association.
I'll make a motion to nominate Martha Reesinger.
I'll second you. Move to elect Martha Reesinger by acclamation as delegate for MSBA Delegate Assembly.
All right, a motion and a second to elect Martha Reesinger as the delegate for Missouri School Boards Association. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lastly, we have the election of an alternate delegate to the Missouri School Boards Association.
I would like to nominate Eric Bowzler for the alternate.
Move to elect Eric Bowzler by acclamation as alternate delegate for MSBA Delegate Assembly.
Second. I have a motion and a second to elect Eric Bowzler as the alternate delegate to Missouri School Boards Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. One more.
Move that during the reorganizational session of the Board of Education of the reorganized school district, Number R2, Saint Genevieve County, Missouri.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, when you want the second case. At 7:17, we'll call the regular session order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First, we have approval of the agenda. Move to approve the agenda of the April 4, 2021 regular meeting, and adjourned.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per Policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I do not have any public comment cards.
I do not either.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's start at the top. This month, there are no notes of appreciation in your board packet, but we just leave this slide up here. Next item, kindergarten enrollment results. Saint Genevieve Elementary held their kindergarten registration on Saturday, March 6, and Bloomstow Elementary held theirs on Sunday, March 27. As you see, there's some history there from 2015 to 16, just kinda giving you an idea of how it, how much it varies. The kids that come into registration and the kids that actually show up on the first day of school. Some years, it's pretty close, and other years, it's a big difference. I do know the number that you see on Saint Gen Elementary is much larger, so we are watching it very closely. There may be a possibility that we will need to add another kindergarten teacher, but we're, we're watching it and we'll make that decision in the future, before August, right? So, pretty solid numbers. We're very happy with those. Of course, if a parent missed kindergarten registration, contact one of our elementary offices. They will get you in touch with Bethany Ketting, our early childhood coordinator, and they will set up a screening and get you through the process so we can get your, get your child screened before kindergarten actually starts. Mrs. Gett, Mrs. Zuesman, anything you want to add? I know both, both processes went really well this year, and everyone seemed to be pretty pleased. Okay? The next thing I have on my slides, one of the favorite slides of the year for most people, is the last day of school. The last day of school will be Friday, May 28. It will be an early dismissal, so 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and our certified staff workday, our teacher workday and checkout, right now is Tuesday, June 1. Of course, we work with some teachers because we did go and use up our five makeup days, so there are some people with plans, but the building principals are great, and they work with them and make sure that they can get in sometime before the end of June and do their checkout so the maintenance and custodian staff can get into their rooms. So. The next slide is about the high school junior, senior prom and graduation for the class of 2021. I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Boyd, and he's gonna give you a few quick updates on these events.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
We are very excited about the prom this upcoming Saturday. We've been working with the county health department in trying to produce a safe and healthy prom for our students while also being able to give them an appropriate experience. Not to hurt our hearts more than last year, not being able to do that for our juniors and seniors, and so we feel like we have a very planned place and a great opportunity to be able to serve our students with your prom this upcoming Saturday. Coronation is scheduled for 9:00. The prom itself is from 7:00 to 10:00. It will be out at the NLS Lodge. We are requesting and requiring all students to be masked, and we are making ten checks at the door as they come in, so that gives you an idea of some of the safety protocols that we've got in place. Dr. Rethan is providing a fantastic job of preparing, working with Ms. Reane and myself to be able to figure out all the nuances with trying to be able to take a look at numbers and capacity, try to figure out exactly what we can do to try to do things in a safe manner while also providing them an opportunity to help. I'm very good about the plan that we have in place, so we feel very, very good about what we have for going this upcoming Saturday. So we're very excited for prom, excited to see our kids in dresses and just being kids, and I think that's the piece of it that really I am holding on to and looking forward to on Saturday. Anybody got questions on prom? And then graduation for our senior class is scheduled for Saturday, May 27. We will do an 8:00 graduation like we traditionally have. That is scheduled right now for the gymnasium, all of those plans, especially with things still just out, are very fluid. Ms. Reane and myself have had many conversations about the gym or, you know, even taking a look at outside, and one of the things that we continue to come back to, and one of the things that we, especially leading up to last year, when we had to look at revising the graduation script and trying to figure out if the weather was gonna come in, if the weather wasn't gonna come in, we would love to have it in the gym, and that's our intention as of right now. If we can do it safely and be able to provide that opportunity for us, we do wanna do it in the gym, but it's more controlled environment. For those that had speaking parts in the states last year, being able to hear on the two sides made it very difficult, so our intention as of right now, hard to work in the gym with graduation. We are going to work with the county health department once again to make sure that we have a good plan in place. We wanna get past prom right now, is kind of our intention, and then once we're past prom, we'll work with the county health department. The senior class is looking at their traditional barbecue that they will have on Thursday. Their last day will be that Wednesday, we will have the senior barbecue on Thursday starting at 9:00, and then we will have graduation practice on Friday starting at 8:30, and we will run through that until the graduates, we feel like they're in a good place, for graduation like we always do, and hopefully we'll be able to have a successful graduation on May 27.
Any questions?
Good to be here.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I will share, it was very difficult last year because the echo is about two words behind where you're at on your script, so you really have to...
This is very distracting.
Yes, you really, you really have to ignore what you're hearing and just keep going with what you're trying to read. So, I'm just excited that these events are gonna happen for our, our students. If there are no questions, I will move on, and it looks like we have the principal reports next. Let's see, I don't have the escape key. Any thoughts? There's no escape key. Oh, nevermind, the pin worked. Hang on. All right. This is Ms. Zuesman.
Good evening. We have twenty-nine days left for our students, so we've been really busy, but we're about to be this year. We had our family fun night this past week. And we'll start with our book vending machine. I think you know that we have a book vending machine where you put gold coins in, and this was the first quarter that we got to use it for the student that reached AR, reading book. Not all students use AR, they like to have their own amount of books to read, there's only pages to read, they have different bookies in their classroom. So those students that met their book, we got to come up to you obviously, they have a book pool, and they have different books that's exciting. And we had family fun night. Andrea Embridge came out and talked about beekeeping and how they pollinate and how she collects the honey, and that was very interesting, she had a lot to gather from her most of the night. We were, our theme was earth day, so we did planting seeds, did nature creation, recycling creation, rock painting. We made sun diggers. We took green spray pictures with the family, put a background with springy. And then the dairy officer came out with his new two little cars, the kids kept a set of cars, they didn't drive, but they had a set of cars. And then every student that came back, they, they received a book that came today, early in the morning. We had deer graduation this month, and that's always kind of an emotional time because it's for fifth grade, right at the end of the year, so you just hope that after six years, they move on, they remember all that you taught, and they remember all that they learned today in graduation. And then fourth grade did a rocket mineral study, and that's always exciting, did to analyze the rocks and look at them closely. That was an exciting time to spell class. And kindergarten, you'd be amazed at their writing, they're learning first, next, then last, they're sequencing their new writing. The McDonald's, I'm not sure what her title is, but she came in and gave us our check.
She's the owner.
She's the owner? Okay. We could only do the drive-through this month or this time, but we still only do $604. It's a really good turn, so thank you for coming to my call tonight. Thank you. This is why I'm hanging on, because I can't go that far. So, we're talking about ways that we're focusing on achievement and how we're trying to close that learning, that gap of learning that the students missed in the last quarter of last year. Ways that we addressed it this year, we purchased a bonding program called Really Great Reading. It was for our K2, and it's been amazing. We're doing the end-of-year assessments now and comparing them to beginning-year assessments, and some kids have made 252% growth. I mean, you look down at the percentage of growth, and it's huge. And the visuals are nice, they have high charts that, like, they start out the year where half of the high chart were in deficit, and now it's less than a quarter of the charts, the students that are in deficit. So it is amazing to do up the program and all the reports that it gives us, and it tells us exactly who we can do interventions with. This year, we had a whole group of students that were in a certain grade level, but that we do, they should have been in grade levels below, so we put them through that intervention piece and try to get them caught up with that. We have NWA, NWEA testing, and we do that three times a year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And again, third, fourth, and fifth grade just finished that, and it's amazing to see the growth on that report. It's good to have individual reports for each kid, and it tells us how they were at beginning of the year, and then it tells us what they're ready for now. So when we move on, it gives us a focus for our instruction. And then that is what we're focusing on our RTI time on, those specific skills. We used our Title I coach, or I did, in my building, mostly remarking with the new teachers this year, to help get them to understand balanced literacy. And then she also pulled kids one-on-one, those kids that really needed that extra boost, she worked with those kids. Ways we plan to address the learning gap in the future, next year, we're gonna be adding that Really Great Reading to third grade, because our hope is that the kids that were in secondary, now that they have that foundation, we can take them further at third grade.
The next slide is about the high school junior, senior prom and graduation for the class of 2021. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Boyd and he's going to give you a few quick updates on these events.
Good evening, you guys.
Good evening.
We are very excited about the prom this upcoming Saturday. We've been working with the county health departments in order to try to produce a safe and healthy prom for our students, while also being able to give them an appropriate experience, not to hurt our hearts more than last year, not being able to do that for our juniors and seniors. And so we feel like we have a very planned place and a great opportunity to be able to serve our students for this prom this upcoming Saturday. Coronation is scheduled for nine o'clock. The prom itself is from seven to ten. It will be out at the NLS Lodge. We are requesting and requiring all students to be masked. And again, we are linking Tim Chefs at the door as they come in. So that gives you an idea of some of the safety protocols that we've got in place. Dr. Rutherford's done a fantastic job of preparing, working with Ms. Ramey and myself, to be able to figure out all the nuances with trying to be able to take a look at numbers and capacity, try to figure out exactly what we can do to try to do things in a safe manner, while also providing them an opportunity to help. We felt very good about the plan that we have in place. So we feel very, very good about what we have for going this upcoming Saturday. So we're very excited for prom. Excited to see our kids in dresses and just being kids. And I think that's the piece of it that really I am holding on to and looking forward to on Saturday. Anybody got questions on prom? And then graduation for our senior class is scheduled for Saturday, May 27th. People do an eight o'clock graduation like we traditionally have. That is scheduled right now for the gymnasium. All of those plans, especially with things still just out there, are very fluid. Ms. Ramey and myself have had many conversations about the gym or even taking a look at outside. And one of the things that we continue to come back to and one of the things that we, especially leading up to last year when we had to look at revising the graduation script and trying to figure out if the weather was going to come in, if the weather wasn't going to come in. We would love to have it in the gym and that's our intention as of right now. If we can do it safely and be able to provide that opportunity for us, we want to do it in the gym. It's more controlled environment. For those that had speaking parts in the states last year, being able to hear on the two sides made it very difficult. So our intentions as of right now are to work in the gym with graduation. We are going to work with the county health department once again to make sure that we have a good plan in place. We want to get past prom right now is kind of our intention. And then once we're past prom, we'll work with the county health department. The senior class is looking at their traditional barbecue that they will have on Thursday. Their last day will be that Wednesday. We will have the senior barbecue on Thursday starting at nine o'clock. Then we will have graduation practice on Friday starting at eight thirty. And we will run through that until the graduates, we feel like they're in a good place for graduation like we always do. And hopefully we'll be able to have a successful graduation on May eighth, if we can.
Any questions?
Good to be here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I will share, it was very difficult last year because the echo is about two words behind where you're at on your script. So you really have to...
This is very distracting.
Yes, you really, you really have to ignore what you're hearing and just keep going with what you're trying to read. So I'm just excited that these events are going to happen for our students. If there are no questions, I will move on. And it looks like we have the principal reports next. Let's see, I don't have the escape key. Any thoughts? There's no escape key. Oh, nevermind, the pin worked. Hang on. Alright. This is Tuesday.
Good evening. We have 29 days left for our students. So we've been really busy, but we're about to finish. We had our family fun night this past week. And we'll start with our book vending machine. I think you know that we have a book vending machine where you put gold coins in. And this was the first quarter that we got to use it for the students that reach their AR, our reading bowl. Not all students use AR. They might just have their own amount of books to read, or something pages to read. They have different bowls in their classroom. So those students that met their goal, we got to come up to you obviously with their goal pool and their book, their book that's exciting. And we had family fun night. Andrea Fritsch came out and talked about making beans and how they pollinate and how she collects the honey. And that was very interesting because she had a lot to gather around for most of the night. We were, our theme was Earth Day. So we did planting seeds, did nature creation, recycling creation, rock painting. We made sun diggers. We took green spray pictures with the family for the background of springing. And then the dairy officer came out with his new two little cars that he kept sending cars. They didn't drive, but they just sent a car. And then every student that came back, they received a book that came today early into the morning. We had deer graduation this month. And that's always kind of an emotional time because it's for fifth grade, right at the end of the year. So you just hope that after six years, they move on and they remember all that you taught. And they remember all that they learned today in graduation. And then fourth grade did a rocket mineral study. And that's always exciting to analyze the rocks and look at them closely. That was an exciting time to spell class. And kindergarten, UPMAs did their writing. They're learning first, next, then last. They're sequencing their new writing. The McDonald's, I'm not sure what her title is, but she came in and gave us our check.
She's the owner.
She's the owner? Okay. We could only do the drive-through this month or this time, but we still only see $640. It's a really good turnout. So thank you for coming to my call tonight. This is why I'm hanging on, because I can't go to the car. So we're talking about ways that we're focusing on achievement and how we're trying to close that learning, that gap of learning that the students missed in the last quarter of last year. Ways that we addressed it this year. We purchased a bonding program called Really Great Reading. It was for our K2 and it's been amazing. We're doing the end of year assessments now and comparing them to beginning year assessments. And some kids have made 252% growth. I mean, you look down the percentage of growth and it's huge. And the visuals are nice. They have pie charts that like they started out the year where half of the pie chart were in deficit. And now it's less than a quarter of the chart, the students that are in deficit. So it is amazing to do all that program and all the reports that it gives us. And it tells us exactly who we can do interventions with. This year we had a whole group of students that were in a certain grade level, but that we didn't actually give them grade levels below. So we put them through that intervention piece and try to get them caught up with that. We have NWA, NWEA testing and we do that three times a year. Beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And again, third, fourth, and fifth grade just finished that. And it's amazing to see the growth on that report. It's good to have individual reports for each kid. And it tells us how they were at beginning of the year and then it tells us what they're ready for now. So when we move on, it gives us a focus for our instruction. And then that is what we're focusing on our RTI time on, those specific skills. We used our Title One Coach, or I did, in my building. Mostly working with the new teachers this year to help get them to understand balanced literacy. And then she also pulled kids one-on-one, those kids that really needed that extra boost. She worked with those kids. Ways we plan to address the learning gap in the future. Next year, we're going to be adding that Really Great Reading to third grade. Because our hope is that the kids that were in secondary, now that they have that foundation, we can take them further at third grade. We're also going to purchase the intervention piece that comes with Really Great Reading. And that is kind of like a whole supplemental piece that works right with the whole group lessons in the classroom. We can work at small groups with kids of the same skill. We're going to continue to analyze our NWEA and our RGR assessments for trends in data and for group placements with our RTI time. We're going to refresh our PLC data leadership teams within our building. We need to go back to the basics and always bring our data and look and see how, you know, how the students learn. If we need to compare teacher strategies or if we need to look at those specific questions and change questions. That second grade level is a high needs class. So we're hoping we are reducing the class sizes in the second grade. And that will help fill in those gaps that they have. We're adding a Title One Reading Coach. We're hoping to, in conjunction with our current Title One Reading Teacher, to be focused solely on working with students and the other one working with teachers. We're adding a Title One Instructional A. This year we had one and she can do our RTI courses at K2, but it was harder for her to hit the math grades than any other kid. So with two, she can really focus on math with the other three levels. We're continuing our focus on ELA assessments, writing formative and summative assessments. And we're aligning with the priority standards. And then we're exploring standard reference learning for next year. We're going to work with master schedules or about the special education students to set a schedule at this time to be teaching. And then how to be teaching drawing across the board. So I hope and work with that to see if that's right. And then we're going to implement a tier three time at fourth and fifth grade. That's those bottom 15% of students that need that extra help. We're hoping to have a principal outside of the school.
So at the state of the elementary, we've had quite a few things going on. Mrs. Andrea Fritsch is currently helping Mrs. Wes Smith, grade with some math this year. So she had the opportunity to share her pollination presentation with them. I believe it was in preparation for her family fun night presentation. So she did a trial run with those students and they really enjoyed it. Our sunshine committee sponsored or hosted a four-quarter kickoff breakfast. And Mr. Pinger went out and made pancakes and bacon, as well as the breakfast that they had provided. So that was a great boost for teacher morale to end the year strong. Just recently, Hannah Pratino C, the I teacher at the high school, she brought her students down and did I to the classroom presentations for both first and second grade. Last year at this time, the first graders missed out due to going home because of COVID. So she made sure to catch them up on those programs this year. And I believe in early May, they will be going up to the fairgrounds for the mini fair. And she's going to meet both first and second grade again. Just some other things that have been happening in our building. We completed the end of year NWEA testing and we're looking at those results. We had some Easter egg hunt activities and fun things that the students got to do. Our special education and virtual students began their math, or they started their math testing. They celebrated Young Authors Day in their classrooms this year. We did not get to bring in outside guests, but teachers made sure to give those students an opportunity to share their findings with your classmates. We also celebrated Mrs. Henry for Assistant Principal's Week last week, no, two weeks ago. He's doing a fantastic job in his first year and so we wanted to give him a shout out and let him know that. And moving forward, we're planning for our pre-K to two family fun night, which was actually supposed to be tonight, but due to the weather and it was an outdoor event, we decided to move it until next week. I think it's supposed to be April 26th. Hopefully we will have a better evening. On Thursday, April 29th, we are doing a kindergarten kickoff. It is sort of a revamped version of kindergarten Monday Day. They're looking at doing it a little bit differently than what we're doing with kindergarten and kindergarten. So we look forward to meeting our new students next week. April 26th, that week, our fifth grade students begin have testing because they have three sections. Our third and fourth grade will start the following week because they have two. So we will be doing math testing for the next few weeks in that building. And we're looking forward to celebrating our teachers on Teacher Appreciation Week. And on May 4th, we have the early childhood and preschool graduations. So we're looking forward to that. That was something we didn't get to have last year. This month, I was able to include some student awards and recognitions in our presentation. Two fourth graders, Cindy Nisly and Laura Bowman, both received first place for their art and music competitions. Cindy entered the Get Excited for the Red White Blue National Anthem singing contest. She had to submit a video recording of herself singing the National Anthem. And she received first place. The neat thing about that is participants could be ages six to 16. So she competed against a wide variety of students and still got first place. She received $25 for that and is going on to the district level. Good luck to her. And then Laura Bowman entered the Illustrating America Art Contest hosted by the DFW Audubon Memorial 2010. And she too won first place for her submission and received a $25 check. And it is her artwork is being submitted to the district level as well. So congratulations to her. We have four positive office referrals. Jayla Donkey, Olivia Poole, Alex Thomas, and Brooklyn Wybrak. All four students were nominated for exhibiting one of the seven habits or more. And then we have March and April feature teacher in Super Staff. Courtney Hire and Renee Yamnitz were nominated as our future teachers. And Lisa Novak and Bailey Otto, our communications director, was nominated for Super Staff. Our teachers wanted to give Bailey a special shout out for her nomination. She has really helped share our school story and create some videos that have been sort of on social media and other places. And I have exciting news to share next month about the most recent videos that she helped with. But the teachers know, but I'm keeping that a secret right now. So I'm looking forward to it in the next month. Alright, so strengthening our academic success for next full year. It's going to sound very much like Bloomsdale Elementary because we tried to do a lot of the things similarly, but we do have a couple of things that are specific to our building. So we also implemented the Really Great Reading bonding program currently just at first and second grade. Next year, we will be doing K3. And we are utilizing the data and seeing growth very much like Bloomsdale is, so that is exciting. We are hoping to add a fifth grade classroom to help reduce that class size. This is a large class moving to fifth grade. And based on the data that we're looking at, they have some areas that they could really strengthen. They are performing lower than they should be in a few areas, so we would like to target that instruction. And by adding a fifth grade classroom, we believe that we can do that. We're adding a Title One Reading Coach we shared with Bloomsdale. We wanted to provide some balance sort of literacy training and implementation for the teachers, monitoring lessons, coaching with them, working with new teachers, very similar to what they are doing at Bloomsdale. Our Title One Reading Coach is primarily just going to be working with small group tier three instruction. We're going to utilize her at grades K to five. She has the skillset and the knowledge to work with those students to try to strengthen those areas that they need improvement upon and help boost up their scores. We are also hoping to add a Title One Instructional A, and that will give us three. We would like to use one for K1, one for 2, 3, and one for 4, 5. So that will really help us target some of those students that often get, you know, kind of left out because you can only stretch those Title One As so far into the day. So having a third one will give us an opportunity to reach more students. We are restructuring our RTI framework at grades K to three. We are looking at doing it a little bit differently in our building and collecting data differently. And we're hoping that that will show some increased growth in certain areas. For a long time, we just looked mostly at DRA scores, but there are so many other pieces of data that we can look at and use that we're hoping to incorporate those into our RTI model. We're going to continue to focus on our monthly data meetings. Again, we're not just using DRA data. We're using reading data, NWEA data, math data. This is just sort of an all encompassing data meeting. We're looking at students as a whole and analyzing their strengths and weaknesses. We're going to continue to review our formative and summative assessment data as part of that. And something new to our building, we are going to implement an intervention block in fourth and fifth grade. We're going to provide targeted instruction for students who need extra support. We're hoping that it's not just tier three students. We're hoping it's tier students and even those tier one students that might need just a little something in a certain area. The fourth and fifth grade teachers are really putting their brains together to figure out how to make that happen. We're going to continue our ELA curriculum work. We're really looking at exploring standard reference grading, analyzing that student data. And as Mrs. Sussman said, prioritizing those special education schedules so that those students have services and make sure their needs are being met and the whole schedule around them. That's it for St. John's Church.
Good evening. Welcome, or welcome back, whichever the case may be. I want to take just a second to go over some calendar dates with you. We, just like everybody else, have an awful lot going on the next few weeks. In one moment, it's hard to believe it's the end of April. And in the next moment, it's hard to believe how much we still have to get through as it's by our calendar. But here are some of the highlights. We also celebrated Assistant Principal's Week just not long ago. We celebrated Mrs. Huffman, who does an amazing job for us. She's the brains of the operation, in case you haven't figured that out already. This week, we started ELA testing and math. And I think this is a good time for me to give a nod to Mrs. Amy Meyer, who does an excellent job each year working out that schedule for us. And as you can imagine, there are just a thousand considerations to make. All about placement of students and the timing of things and making sure that classes are covered and displays students are covered. And she's done an outstanding job with that. And our teachers have also done an outstanding job of picking up that schedule and running it. They were really prepared and we were able to kick things off in good fashion this week. Tomorrow, of course, is Administrative Professional Day. Good reminder for some of you guys that might need it. And we plan on celebrating Tina and Mallory. And I know the nurse's office will be celebrating Kathy as well. And we're so proud of the secretaries that we have in place. They do an amazing job and really keep us on our toes. Next week, we'll begin with science testing and the following week, math testing and math. May 11th, we have choir concert and that will be middle school first that evening. And then we'll clear the path and run the high school choir concert that same night. They'll be back to back with a little gap in between so that we can make sure that the path has time to clear out and we have a safe number of audience members there that night. And then May 14th, I'm proud to announce eighth grade celebration is back. Like John said, you know, that was a heartbreaker for us guys to hear that we had to cancel that because it's so important to these students and something that they spend their restful career looking forward to. So I'm happy to be able to bring that back this year. It will look a little bit different. We're going to stay out of campus and we're going to provide the snacks and the activities. But we did make sure that they have that opportunity. And we're just going to have to be a little creative with it. But the ideas are flowing and I think we're going to have some good things lined up for those guys. The best spotlight picture all year walks to Mr. Draper. Totally spontaneous, by the way, not ghost. Mr. Draper was nominated last month. He's our March Spotlight winner. And as you can see, he has earned some very positive recognition for the work that he does with students, with teachers, and mainly for going above and beyond. You know, that seems to be one of the biggest themes that we hear in nominations for Spotlight Award. And Mr. Draper is certainly no exception to that. This month, in fact, just today, we named Kate Diamond, the April Spotlight Award winner. And so a lot of the comments that we got were about the outstanding personality that she has and still just a smooth sailing. You know, she, she comes in, she does her thing. She's steady, she's consistent, she's a calming voice to those around her and just does an amazing job, very, very innovative in the science classroom. She comes up with some of the best projects for our students. So hats off to Mrs. Diamond as well. Here are some of our positive office referrals. I always feel a little guilty because we have so many come in every month that I don't feel like I can really display all of their faces for you. And I apologize for that. But then I'm reminded each month that Mrs. Huffman does an excellent job of making sure those get out to social media too. So hopefully you're seeing them in those ways. And, and I just feel obligated to take a moment to mention these students. They, they earned this recognition and I want to make sure they have their moment. Carly Bosler, Kayla Clemmons, Seth Fisher, Sandy Reminger, Madison Henson, Sophia Hook, Heidi Schmelsel, Bennett Walz, Natalie St. Clair, Abby Boyer, Kalen Fowler, Grace Pettiger, Charlie Corbin, Wyatt Palmer, Jonathan Hacker, Meadow Kurzon, Aiden Roth, Chase Stell, Raxton Snomber, Hannah Arons, Ava Rear, Sophia Fritsch, Aiden Lewis, Frankie Witte, Ryan Graham, Shane Williams, Megan Jarvis, Brooklyn Johnson, Nate Bosler, Miranda Thomas, and Maisie Baker. Congratulations to those students. You know what you did too, right?
I did.
Good job.
That happened.
Good job. Excellent. I want to talk to you for just a minute too about some of the things we're doing in middle school. We use slightly different terminology to talk about the loss from COVID. Instead, we prefer to call it priority learning. And that's because I, and this is me talking Scott, one person, I don't like the idea that it's a gap and that there's something we have to make up. Instead, we prioritize and get back on track. So I prefer to call it priority learning. Some of the things that we've been doing is that in the fall, we, on our own, within departments, identified the key objectives. That might have been what they considered to be the most important things to cover this year. But it might have also been some of the things that they know they didn't get to last year. So we did that just on our own as departments. Through the year though, we've been using the NWEA data, our SLOW data, which is somewhat comparable year to year because sometimes they use the same assessments, and other assessment data. Now what I've done is I've given you a little sneak preview over here on the right. And I realized that's very small and it's a little blurry. And that's okay because this is individualized student data and not the kind of thing that we would want to risk, risk violating students' privacy. So it's perfectly fine that it's that way. In fact, I cut the name off of it. Let's assume though that this is my warrant, okay? What we can do is bring up Lauren's individualized report. And in this case, we're looking at math. If you mentioned that report as a top half and a bottom half, let's focus on the top half. On the left-hand side, we get a couple of numbers there. One of them tells us her achievement level, but one of them tells us her growth level compared to other students. And as you know, growth is often as important and sometimes more important than what's where a student achieves. We want to see that they are making progress. In the center, there's a breakdown of the subtopics under that test. This one is mathematics, by the way. So in the center, it has things like basic geometry skills, number sequencing. And we can click on those. That's what I love about this report. This doesn't do it justice because it is such a clickable report. We can get in there and drill down to the student's strengths and weaknesses. And then on the right-hand side is where the teacher would set growth objectives for that student. On the bottom is the trend line that plots the students' data from test to test. So we've had fall of last year and then, no, it's mid-year of last year. And then this year, fall, mid-year, and end of year. So this student has four data points. So we can see what the trend line is. This student, let's say it's Lauren again, is performing above average. The teacher therefore has not determined a growth target for this student. But you can see in the center there, there's a little bit of a dip. And that's between last year and then the COVID shutdown and then the next time we administered the test. NWEA predicted this would happen. In fact, they have analyzed all of the data and said, you should probably expect this amount of slippage in math or this amount of slippage in English or this amount of slippage in reading. And what we are seeing is consistent with the numbers that they projected. But they also said, stick with it and you'll see them bounce back. And that's what we've seen. They are, most of our students back to or above the level where we first tested them. So we are seeing that rebound. That doesn't mean that we're okay because there's still a lot of things for us to cover. But it is commensurate with the data that they told us that we've But it is commensurate with the data that they told us that we would get. Side note, I want to take my hats off to Dr. Flea, Dr. Taylor, and Dr. Lindsay, who had the forethought to get into that assessment partnership, the conglomerate of schools that said, maybe there's a better way for us to do this. And the better way that we decided to explore was this test, N W E A. You've heard all of us talk about it so far. And it was not the easiest administration at first. But we've gotten used to it, we've learned the tricks, and now the payoff is in the data. And we're using that data frequently. In fact, it's quickly becoming a vital part of special education assessments too because it is so drilled that we can get down into subtopics, subjects. And it's been very valuable for that. So thanks to you guys for your leadership. In addition to that information, DESI just this month released the statewide priorities standards, which were determined by educators from all across the state. Those have just come out in final draft this month. And we are in the process of introducing those to our teachers and thinking about how we might focus on those in the days, months, and years ahead. And then in fall, we'll have math data again, which we did not from last year. But we'll have that that we can use to compare to previous years, see how students are growing in that measurement, and use that data to inform and structure next year. These are the things on the slide. What's not on the slide is the intangibles. The value that we place in teachers' ability to, on the fly, on the spot, monitor their students, to gauge their assessment levels, to gauge their mastery levels. And those are things that no program, no computer, no test could possibly replicate. And it's one of the strongest areas that we place value in our teachers, that we recognize the value of our teachers. So hats off to them as well. What's also not on the slide are the things that we do day to day. Continuing our investment in things like New Zealand, Study Island, Math Space, special education interventions, our regular Thursday tutoring program, and the extra tutoring that we offer to students when we have virtual learning days. There were some days we said, guys, we need to come in so we can help you. And we were able to pull those feelings throughout the year. The broad strokes are here. The finer strokes take place because of the expertise of your teachers. So hats off to those guys. And thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, we're back again. So as I talked about, I want to reiterate one thing about prom. I do want to send a special shout out to Nurse Lytle and Mrs. Isabella Sibyl, that are willing to give up the time to come in and actually do temp checks for us at the door. And so I just wanted to give them a special shout out. I worked with Nurse Lytle today and she said that that was something that they were willing to come in and do and provide that for our students, just as an extra precaution and side of safety. This is our prom board. And so we are excited to have that piece back. As I stated earlier, coordination is at nine o'clock. Going beyond this piece though, our seniors also got an opportunity to be able to attend a senior trip this year. And that was something that we were also very excited about. We had our big building-wide testing day on Tuesday, the 16th. And that provided the, Tuesday, the 13th, I'm sorry, last week. That provided our juniors an opportunity to be able to take the E C T, provided our freshmen and sophomores an opportunity to be able to get in, take some E O Cs for English. So we needed to get the seniors to a different location. We traditionally have always wanted a senior trip. We had to get a little creative this year. And so we took our seniors to Elephant Rock. I don't have the pictures. Mr. Haney actually got an opportunity to take the seniors this year. It was kind of a chance for him to get away from the building and be able to engage and spend some time with that senior class. And me, an opportunity to be able to see the testing side of things that traditionally I don't get to see. Usually I travel with the seniors and get an opportunity to be on that trip. So they were very excited just to be able to leave. I know that traditionally, when we get permission forms to come in, usually we're scrambling around all the way up until the end to get permission forms from seniors. When we went through and took a look at things a week prior to the trip, we were down to single digits of seniors that hadn't turned in permission forms. That's how much they were clamoring just to be able to do something. So it was a great opportunity for them to be able to get outside, outdoors. They ended up having some nice weather. It was raining that morning, but by the time they got over to Elephant Rock, it was beautiful weather. Mr. Haney said everything went great and the seniors really had a good time. So we were excited to provide that opportunity for them. Couple of big things going on in high school. We did have a couple of positive office referrals. Taylor Heatherly at the top was nominated by Mr. Banks. And Mr. Banks really talked about her growth that he's seen throughout this school year and really just a new focus on school success that she's really kind of brought to the table is we've transitioned back to five days a week and full-time traditional learning. We've seen a huge growth from her and we definitely wanted to give her a shout out with a positive office referral. And then Caleb Miracle down at the bottom, he's kind of a special one. He's one of our cadet teachers that works very closely with Mr. Toons and myself. We were kind of put in a predicament earlier this semester with one of our classes. And we needed to move Caleb. He was actually a cadet teacher for us in the middle school. And we needed to move him to a high school course. And he came in with a huge smile on his face. And Coach Ballard actually nominated him for a positive office referral and stated that he's just a huge asset to her and her classroom. He works in our adaptive P E class. And she said, just does a phenomenal job of working with all of those students and providing them an opportunity to be able to get just a quality experience. So we're very thankful for Caleb. And like I said, he took it like a tru-er. He was in the middle school and we transitioned to the high school and just a smile the entire time. So he's fantastic for that. And then we have our Rotary Student of the Month, which is Alyssa Fanstock, and our Els Student of the Month, which is Hannah Reeves. A little plug for the Rotary. I got an email from Mrs. Jury that the Rotary Club is actually going to be working on getting a plaque donated to the high school each year. And that plaque is actually going to have the graving of each of the students for each month that we're going to be able to display here that are our Rotary Students of the Month. That's really the opportunity for us to be able to showcase those students year in, year out and give them the true recognition that they need as those Rotary Students of the Month. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Jury for her hard work in making that happen because I know that it's been a big push for the last several months working with the Rotary, trying to get them to see the value of that, the value of having that in the high school. And she's done a fantastic job of doing that. I think that's a great opportunity for our kids to be recognized for their hard work. We did have one scholar signing this month. Sidney Moberger is signed with Ovalport University in Georgia. It's a D three school. I know that she's extremely excited. Mom, dad, sister, and some friends were actually in the office checking in whenever Sid was signing. And they were all extremely excited to be here. You could just tell the energy that was there when Sid walked down to the office to see all of them. You could tell she was just really excited to be moving to the next step and also the opportunity to be able to continue to compete and play basketball at Ovalport. So we definitely want to give a huge shout out to Sidney. And actually, I want to go back to that for just a second. You see the picture on the right-hand side? She, this is something that's kind of unique. She actually asked a couple of her high school teachers that have made an impact on her, Mr. Schwan and Mr. Diamond, to come and actually be part of her signing as well. So it's kind of been a really neat this year. We've kind of seen an evolution with these signings. Not only families are coming, we have friends that are coming. Some of our other students are coming and participating. And she even reached out to a couple of her teachers and asked them to come be part of that. So that's been kind of a neat evolution to capture that whole moment for our students. Just a couple of great things that are taking place. Colin Fritch earlier was named as the Missouri Scholars Academy. He will be participating in that virtual experience. He will get an opportunity to be able to be part of the academy. So we're very excited for Colin. Brittany Fryler placed eighth in the F P L A Leadership Competition. And that was a really big deal. Mrs. Vayner and Mrs. Henderson were very pleased and very excited for Brittany and really what she's done for F P L A and even beyond that with our S B E program. And then we had a first-place ag sales team with our, with Mrs. Richie Dunsey and our act group. They do a phenomenal job. And being able to do that would be up to date. They actually will be moving on. That was at the district level. They will then be moving on to the state competition in order to be able to continue that opportunity at that level. Mrs. Skowski was named the Semocis Secondary Counselor of the Year. This was one that really hit home with me. Mrs. Skowski does a phenomenal job with our students. And it was evident the day that she received the award. It was virtual this year and I got an opportunity to be in the building and actually be down in the office and be part of it. And so as the Zoom is going on and they're announcing that Mrs. Skowski is the award recipient, she is pulled away from the Zoom before she knows that she's about to be named. She's pulled away from the Zoom because there's a student that's coming in. She's like, well, I gotta go take care of that. And so Mr. Toons and I are trying to figure out how to get her back into his office so that way she can hear that she's being recognized as the District Counselor of the Year. And so we made a, fabricated this story to get her back into the office. And we got her back in there. Just the look on her face was surprising. It was just, was amazing. She does so much with workforce development. She's part of Mrs. Jury to start to bring internship opportunities to some of our students here at the high school. The social emotional learning, we actually offer a class here in the high school now for our students' second semester, our S E L class. And she has been a huge part of getting it not only started, but she's in the classroom with those students day in, day out, providing them opportunities to be able to learn coping strategies and skills and things, not only that will help them now, but also in the future. So she's done a phenomenal job with that. She leads our, I should actually say, 10th and 11th grade level teams, ninth grade is Mr. Draper. But she leads those grade level teams and does a phenomenal job with that, making good academic decisions and trying to figure out what we can do to keep kids motivated, especially in the middle of their high school career. When we get our freshmen, it's that transition. Mr. Draper does a phenomenal job of that. And by the time they get to their senior year, Mr. Toons is trying to figure out how we can get them to graduation and how we can get them to that next step. Sometimes that middle piece is very difficult, keeping those students motivated and figuring out what we can do to try to keep them engaged here at the high school. And she does a phenomenal job of that. And then just the communication piece. If you guys walk into her office and listen to her talk on the phone and communicate with parents, work with teachers, work with kids, it's just phenomenal. She's not afraid to pick up the phone. She's not afraid to make a phone call. She does a fantastic job of documenting all of those things. I could go on and on about the job that she does with her kids, how hard she works. You know, she's here in the summertime. She's putting in the time, the hours. I can call her, I can send her a text. She's always willing to do whatever she needs to do to provide a quality opportunity for our kids. And so we definitely want to recognize her for her big honor, but also just the work that she does for our students day in, day out. And then the last piece, I'll be short and sweet at the high school. We really have just a couple of big focuses. A new focus for us, and I want to thank Dr. Taylor for this because he came in and he sold our, and he might be surprised about this, but he came in and he sold our algebra teachers and he sold our English teachers on the importance of N W E A bridging into the high school. So it's been an opportunity that's been at the middle school. It's been something that's been at our elementary buildings. And he came in and did a phenomenal job of just talking to our high school algebra teachers, English teachers, and selling them on the concept and the idea that this could be very beneficial for us now and going into the future. And so we are going to be offering that opportunity for our algebra students, our English students, and also our biology students in science. We're very excited about that. I know our teachers just keep talking about the opportunity to be able to get those benchmark assessments and be able to evaluate where those students are at and actually be able to make a difference with the kids. You know, if you look at E O C testing, we do that at the end of the year. A lot of times, we give those results back either right before we leave for break or we never get the results back until the following school year. By that point, it's too late to be able to intervene and be able to try to make a difference with these kids that are in our algebra class or that are in a biology class or even an American government class. It makes it very difficult at that level to be able to do anything. So they are clamoring for this piece that offers them that benchmark opportunity to be able to see that growth and be able to work individually with those students, identify those learning standards, things that they need to improve on. And I know that, and I just think about Mr. Schwan and just every time I talk to him about the N W E A, he's so fired up and he's so excited about the potential of the reports and everything that come with it. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our students and for our teachers going forward to provide them with quality, rewarding opportunities. And then the other thing that we do, I know that we've talked a lot about learning gaps and, you know, the way that education has happened throughout the pandemic. I'm going to give a major kudos to all of our buildings, all of our teachers, all of the administrators, all of the support that you guys have given us because I really do feel like we've continued to give a quality education to our kids. And I know that there are gaps that are there, but I can tell you that even looking at data, even looking at trends, the gaps that we have are not anywhere close to what we're seeing across the state level. And so I've been very impressed with what we've been able to provide for our students, what our teachers have been able to do with continuing to reach out, continuing to utilize Zoom, continuing to utilize all of the resources that we have to continue to provide a quality educational opportunity. With that being said, I put the number 33% up there. And we started our Dragonfire program back up in the high school. And that is our huge intervention strategy that we utilize on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we didn't run it at all, obviously, when we went out last year from March to May. We didn't run it at all first semester. We didn't run it even to start second semester. And we just started this, we actually are now on our second rotation. And today was day three of our second rotation. So we've only been in it for about five weeks. And from the time that we started that Dragonfire rotation, the very first one, to where we are now, we just got our progress reports. And I looked at the progress reports prior to starting Dragonfire. And I looked at our progress reports now after we've been in it for at least one rotation. And we saw, we've seen a 33% decrease in Fs in that time. We're talking four weeks, just with that program running, we've seen 33% reduction in Fs. That's huge. And I know that I can speak volumes to the impact that that's had. I know prior to the pandemic hitting, we had 100 semester Fs. We were at 100 semester Fs, which you can think about that, 550 kids, 600 kids in the high school. 500 semester Fs is not very many. And a large majority of that were encompassed by just a handful of kids. The program speaks volumes for itself. It gives teachers an opportunity to be able to engage with kids, to provide those intervention strategies, to choose the students that they want an opportunity to be able to work with. Gives our grade level teams an opportunity to meet with individual students, to be able to motivate them, inspire them, to give them an adequate way, those students that are doing great things. Our grade level teams have taken off the run of that and provided them with different incentives and different things that they want to just provide for them. I know our teachers were clamoring for this. I know they're excited to be back in and just, they're seeing the results. And that's the piece of it that's been huge for me. So those are the two big focuses that I see for us, not only having now, but also continuing to lead into the future. I know that my goal is to see us get back to under 100 semester Fs. That's ultimately what my goal is. And I know Mr. Haney and I talk about that a lot. He wanted to see that number not be triple digits and he wanted to see it be double digits. And we were close and we want to get back to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I mean, we have the principal report. The next item on my report is to point out that you do have safety reports in your board packet. And just to explain, because these are our ALICE safety drills. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So this is basically our active shooter-intruder drill. Our staff members are trained annually. We review and go over, Officer Clark is our ALICE trainer. She goes over everything and re-trains and talks with them every year. She goes into their classrooms when they ask for assistance on thinking through different scenarios and offers some advice. And then we do, we do work on and with the students and have a school-wide drill on this topic. So it's an important one and one that we gladly practice with the hope that we never have to use it. So that is the end of my report tonight.
Thank you. I just, I want to tell the buildings and building principals, thank you. I talked with Dr. Fleeg about some of the learning gaps. And I know that we've spent tons of time in local dollars and federal dollars and state dollars on plexiglass and masks. And we went through multiple iterations of bringing our children back safely. But behind the scenes, so much is happening to tackle those gaps. I'm sorry I'm using that term, but, and so much is already prepared for next year. So thank you all very much for all you're doing to cover that academic piece. And then one other thing, sorry. And I'm going to read this because like Joan, I want to make sure I get it right. Dr. Fleeg has been recognized as Missouri Association of School Administrators Southeast District's Emerging Superintendent. And I want to congratulate her.
Thank you.
Over the past few years, as a new superintendent, Dr. Fleeg has proven to be a careful, thorough planner, pragmatic problem solver, a proponent of community partnerships, and an empathetic leader. These qualities have been invaluable to our district, but have been especially essential over the last year. She guided us through the unexpected and jarring changes brought on by the pandemic while helping keep the students' interests at the forefront. Her leadership, with her leadership as the foundation, our faculty and support staff, as well as our local community, worked together to determine the best direction for our district and took a calm path to bringing our kids back, a secure path, a safe path. All the while, she remains steadfast and focused on our district's continuous improvement, including financial planning and a vision for future facilities and what is best for students who are graduating both this year and 20-plus years from now. So Dr. Fleege is more than deserving of this recognition and the Board of Education is thrilled to offer her congratulations.
Well, I appreciate that a lot. But, you know, it's not just me, but I have Paul and Teresa, these building administrators you see here, the ones that are at home. We're supposed to supervise games tonight, but they got canceled because of snow. But really, the true leaders, I think, are those teachers and support staff members who are actually in it and doing what is right for our kids. You know, there are questions occasionally, but without thought for, you know, their safety, sometimes they just do what they know to do because it's best for our kids. And I think we all appreciate our role. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I think we move on to.
Yes, on to new business. First on the new business agenda is the exciting approved health dental vision and life insurance.
First we have to do.
Already messed up in my first. Summer school, unfinished business.
Yes, that's an exciting topic.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I liked this slide so much last year, I just kept it for this year. Summer school classes that we're going to offer this summer are Algebra I, Applied Math II and III, and English I through IV. And some of those are on as needed basis. We've added Applied Math, some of the math instructors at the high school were noticing some additional struggles by students in their classes and they thought it would be appropriate to do some analysis and figure out how many of those students there would be that may be able to take advantage of summer school. They put a presentation together for me, talked to me about it, and, you know, after talking to the high school administration about it, it was obvious we had a need there. So we have a new teacher that's going to teach Applied Math II and III this summer. Our current schedule, we're going to have 60 hours for both semesters. We're going to have a first and second semester. First semester is going to run from June 2nd to June 18th. And the second semester is going to run from June 19th through July 8th. We have some varying times, roughly it's going to be H-12. Sometimes it's a little earlier and runs a little later to get to that 60 hours. But I worked with the teachers at high school to come up with an appropriate schedule, one that they're comfortable with to keep the students' attention during that day. So I ask that you approve our summer school schedule for the summer of 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve summer school for 2021.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to health dental vision and life insurance rates for 2021, 2022 school year.
Yes, let's have some fun. Insurance is not one of my favorite topics. Okay, I am going to pull some information up. This is the same information that is in your board packet. This first slide is just kind of an overview of monthly cost. And then I'll slide it down because there's an annual cost at the bottom. In the past, we've offered four plans to our employees, but we have found since we've moved to a high deductible health plan as the board paid plan, there are employees in this district that have spouses that work at companies that require them, if they want to use their spouse's insurance as a secondary, they require, let me back up. They require the, our employee to take our insurance because we offer it to them. And then if our employee then wants to use the spouse's insurance as a secondary, the law requires that the, our employee be on a PPO plan, not a high deductible health plan. You can't be on a high deductible health plan and a PPO plan. So in the past, we offered two PPO plans, the board-paid high deductible plan and then the board-paid high deductible health plan where you contribute into their health savings account because it's at a cheaper rate. This year, the insurances committee is proposing that we add this PPO 11. It is the one in the middle. Because those employees who want to use their spouse's insurance as a secondary can go on this PPO plan and it's only $9.61 a month. Whereas this year, I don't know the exact amount, but it's 60-something dollars for them to pay every month. This is a much cheaper rate. It mirrors the high deductible health plan option pretty closely with some greater benefits on the prescription side. So this would save those employees who are doing this a lot of money. So we feel it's important that we add this PPO plan to give those employees that option. So if you look at the green column, this is the board paid plan that the committee is proposing. This is the same exact high deductible health plan that we have in place this year. This year, it's about $587 a month for each employee. With the 4.8% increase that we're seeing this year, it'll be $528.10 next year. If you jump over to the right to the high deductible health plan number eight, the very bottom there, the board will contribute 97.03 into the employee's health savings account because that plan is much cheaper. And again, if you want to buy up, you know, you can go to PPO 11 and then the PPO preferred and the PPO access. Access, we have to offer an access plan. And the difference between access and preferred is access is a richer plan and it gives you access to St. Francis and Barnes Jewish, which are the highest, have the highest rates in the state, I believe. Whereas if you go with the preferred plan, and we can offer preferred plans in our area because we don't have a St. Francis or a Barnes Jewish here. So we get a greater savings compared to some school districts in our consortium like Farmington that has a St. Francis in their community. So if we scroll down, if I can do this. You see, you see the annual cost. So the district cost for each employee's health insurance will be $6,337.20. So health insurance for all of our employees, and we estimated 273, will be like 1.98 million this coming school year. So you're like, well, that's a big number. So let's jump to this next slide. These are the actual plans. And I know it's a lot of information and I'm going to just zoom in a little bit, but really slide you down to the bottom so you can see a little bit more about the cost. This is a comparison. This year, we are currently paying 1.878 million for employee insurance. So with the jump next year to the 1.9, employee health insurance will cost us 102,478.87. So that is the increased cost to the district. As part of trying to get the rates down, we are going to move dental vision and our $30,000 life insurance policy on each employee to Anthem. And Anthem is going to take on those insurances at no additional cost. So those rates are going to stay the same for next year, so there's no increase there. That's just a comparison of the prices. So you just kind of see the health insurance increase over three years. Dental vision and life because we've moved from this provider to that and then different providers to keep the costs down. Each provider that we moved to has not made us increase those rates in the past three years. So really, the increase that we see in our benefits that we provide, the insurance benefits, is all health insurance related. Along with the increased rate, what we are going to, what our broker, our insurance broker, Wall Street, is going to do, and Anthem is going to do, we're going to add in some plans as incentives, with cash-based incentives to employees. And it's actually across our consortium, trying to get them to be better consumers of their health insurance and their pharmaceutical needs. You know, programs like GoodRx, anyone can use that, that's a great, you know, you should always check that because you may be able to pay cash much cheaper than use your insurance. Like if you need, for example, a colonoscopy, if you call this number and you shop around and find a cheaper rate on a colonoscopy, they will send you a cash reward for doing that, if you use the cheaper one. Some wellbeing programs, like if you're going to have a baby, if you participate in the program and you make it through, then they'll provide you a cash reward. If you have, like you smoke and you want to quit smoking, there's another program like that, there's a wellbeing program. So there are some great incentives. So when we, when you approve this tonight, I will send the rate sheet and the preferred plans to Wall Street for this year with all of the changes and all of the additional items they're putting in place. They're actually going to send four representatives here to sit down and talk with our employees and get them signed up and tell them about the different plans. So the committee is proposing that you use, that we use PPO 3, which is a Blue Access Plan, PPO 3 Preferred, PPO 11 Preferred, the High Deductible Health Plan 7 Preferred, the High Deductible Health Plan 8 Preferred. And the committee is recommending that the board paid plan stay as the High Deductible Health Plan 7 Preferred. So I would recommend that you approve these tonight and we will start getting the information up to all employees and getting them enrolled for next year. Does anyone have any questions?
What was our increase last year to this year?
The overall? It was, it ended at 4.8, it started at 22%.
So that's a little bit the same?
Pretty close.
I'll move to approve the health dental vision and life insurance rates for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Dr.? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. To addition of a fifth grade teacher at St. John Elementary for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So as Mrs. Gex said earlier, our fourth grade class at St. John Elementary has 91 students in it, so it's a larger class. So that means there are currently 22 to 23 students per classroom. With the addition of a fifth grade teacher at St. John Elementary, and that should be far 21, 22, I apologize. It would reduce the class sizes to about 18, 19 students per room. And as she said earlier, this is a class that needs some intervention, that needs a little bit more attention, especially before we get them and send them to sixth grade. So we feel it's important that we add a fifth, fifth grade teacher in this building. I'll make a motion that we approve the addition of a fifth grade teacher at the St. John Elementary for the 21, 22 school year.
Dr.? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the addition of a Title 1A instructional reading coach for the 21, 22 school year.
Dr. Fleege did a little bit of rearranging with some personnel on the Title 1 budget, so it freed up some money. And with the needs that the elementary principals came and were discussing with us, we kicked around several ideas that would fit into the budget structure for what they were wanting. And it turned out that we were able to free up our current Title 1 instructional reading coaches to just work with students. And so we have one in each building, so the one at Bloomsdale will just work with students at Bloomsdale, the one at St. John Elementary will just work with students at St. John Elementary. Right now, they're trying to juggle working with students, working with teachers, trying to coach them up as well. So we thought adding an instructional reading coach to specifically exclusively work with teachers at both buildings, so they would spend half their time in St. John Elementary and then part of their time out at Bloomsdale Elementary, specifically working to coach teachers and focusing on that. That was within the Title 1 budget. So I think I covered everything. I think it's been tremendously difficult and the elementary principals will attest to Pagan and Lynette trying to juggle, working with teachers and working with students and getting to all the students. This also addresses some of the gaps that might exist there and allows Pagan and Lynette to focus on helping those students and being able to pull them out rather than being pulled away and having to go into the classroom to coach a teacher or to help them out. I recommend that we add a instructional reading coach to exclusively work with teachers and work in both. Questions?
I'll move to approve the addition of a Title 1 instructional reading coach for the 21, 22 school year.
Dr.? The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the addition of a Title 1 instructional aide at St. John Elementary for the 21, 22 school year.
Yes.
Me too. So in looking at the numbers, the number of students at Bloomsdale and St. John Elementary, I just pulled the numbers before we came down. Right now, we have an enrollment of 298 at Bloomsdale and 506 at St. John Elementary. Hopefully after, traditionally, we've had two instructional aides in each building. We had to change that a little bit last year, so Bloomsdale went down to one. I think we're going to ask tonight that we add that number. But we wanted, in looking at the numbers and what the ratios of students to those aides, we thought it was appropriate to add another instructional aide at St. John Elementary. And then Nadia talked about it in her presentation, having one of those work with K-1, another one work with 2, 3, another one work with 4, 5, focused that way. That evens out the numbers, the ratio of numbers of students to instructional aides in each of those buildings that makes the difference. So I recommend that you add an instructional aide at St. John Elementary.
I'll move to approve the addition of a Title 1 instructional aide at St. John Elementary for the 2021, 2022 school year.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I just want to reiterate, these things will help, things we talked about earlier happens. Thank you all very much. Next, we have bus cameras.
Bus cameras. So I think we have some excited principals and administrators. Probably some parents on this one. So was it two years ago Bailey? Bailey and Officer Clark, Kristen Clark wrote the grant to get bus cameras on all of our buses. They spent a lot of time, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into the grant and we were not awarded the grant. But with CARES Act money, we do have some funds that we can put towards transportation. And I'll talk about that more in just a little bit. So what we're recommending tonight is that we purchase and install 40 kits on our buses. And that will allow us to cover every bus. There will be four interior wide view cameras, that's what you see at the top right. I believe we are going to put all the cameras on the same side of the bus so you see. I believe we are going to put all the cameras on the same side of the bus, so you see the same image, and you don't have to try to figure out if the kids are going on or going off, because if you put them on each side of the bus, it really distorts the path of the student. And we're also proposing that we put ones on the stop arm to catch people who violate stopping at the stop arm, and you'll see an image on the next slide. So the purchase and the installation would include all of those items. So we do have a memorandum of understanding that needs to be signed if this is approved tonight for father bus, because father owns the buses, but we would own the camera systems and need to maintain and have those moved and our new ones installed as new buses come onto the fleet. So that's just the summary of the hardware. Oh, we're on computer, hang on. So this, at the top right, is just kind of an image that I pulled off the internet of what it's going to look like. I do have a video here that I will show you. We're not, in the video, we're not getting all of the pieces, but I think Bailey and I can jump in and say, yes, this is what we're getting, no, we're not getting that. But, you know, the primary, one of the primary reasons that we're doing this with the grant money is the interior cameras will allow us to contact trace students much quicker. We still do have to do that on occasion. It would be a quick way for us to look and see if the students were wearing masks, if they're mask to mask, we don't have to have them quarantined. If one of them's not wearing a mask, we have to go ahead and move forward with the quarantine. It will also allow us to monitor student behavior and student safety while the bus is coming to and from school. And again, as we talked about, the stop arm camera, it will allow drivers and district personnel and law enforcement to capture that video footage and images. As you see in this image, you can pull and zoom in on a driver, license plate, to identify the offender. The camera system also has a GPS tracking system, and that way, if there's an accident, it will be easy for us to figure out where they are and go to them. The other thing with these cameras inside the bus, the driver is going to have a button in close proximity to them, so if something's happening on their bus or someone's coming through the stop arm and not stopping, all they have to do is tap the button and it marks the videotape. And so when they report it, it'll be really easy for the person trying to find the footage to go to that marker and watch it from there forward to capture the images and the things that we need. With this system, you can, what's it called? Blur out, blur out students or students around the offender, so you can get some of that. So we are proposing, we are proposing that we go with Safety Vision. Safety Vision is a member of Byboard, which is a national purchasing cooperative. St. Jen R2 is a member of this cooperative, and in your board packet, you will see a page of the national membership, and St. Jen R2 is on it. To pay for this purchase, because it is $109,000, we're going to use $50,000, almost $51,000 in CARES Act funds through this transportation supplement grant, and local funds will have to use about $58,000, $59,000 to cover the rest of the purchase. But this is something that we have been wanting, I think Mrs. Duesen's been begging for, what, five years or more? So we feel like with the CARES Act fund funding, it's time to take care of this. So if you want to see the video, to kind of get an idea, we don't need to watch the whole thing, just the beginning of it. You think Bailey? You can put cameras on the bus or on the front or the back, we're not doing that. We don't have live looking. works is they have their message cards that are locked in the bus system, and we, we go to that bus, and the whole one has the, because there are two, and the one is, so we don't have to worry about trying to get out of the bus. But this is something that, um, it's something that our, um, so that we want to, once we're in, so that, so that, and then also you can see on some of the buses, we're attached to a red angle, so that's the angle we can see, um, or interior cameras along one side. One of the front angles where it looks down and see what the bus car is, that's where the bus car is. So I can send you the link so you can watch the rest of this, but it just kind of goes over some of the same things, but I really just wanted you to see that interior shot and just how it might look for us, so.
So is there just, who has access to their cards?
We think one person at the bus lot, what's that person's name Bailey? I think it's the, it's the other, he sends us the video now, I can't remember.
Corey or James?
I think it's Corey.
Corey.
Yeah, so Corey would have access and he would.
Those are our administrators. Bus drivers do not.
Um, let me see if I, I think this is the final slide, so if you have any more questions, I'm going to say Bailey's the expert. She's, she talked with someone, what was it, 58 minutes? 52 minutes.
He was a student from a district company, I was in, he said he worked with him fifteen years, he had, but it's a state office, and he wanted to adapt it on the street angle for, um, to let us, for the day off, so it's great.
Does this include installation, or do we, does it include installation?
Yes, um, because we have access, so it's in the, uh, installation, and that, um, our maintenance technology and certain bus company, uh, it, uh, there for that installation, so it also is great outside of all those, um, uh, uh.
So that's.
Thinking summer, we want to have it in place for next, starting next year.
And then the dashboard, not the bus dashboard, but the digital dashboard, that's something that we would have, not the bus.
I believe so. And I will explain what I, I meant to do this, but a national purchasing cooperative, being a member, allows us to go through, it's called a co-op, that's the nickname, because they take care of all of the comparison bidding and making sure that, you know, someone's not overcharging us and we're getting a high-quality product. So we do not actually have to put together bid specs, put it out for a bid, open the bids, and try to do the comparison. Byboard, the national purchasing cooperative, cooperative, cooperative does all of that. Yes?
Is there a cost for the membership?
Uh, I don't, not to a school district.
Okay.
Well, we've been a part of the.
Byboard?
What?
Byboard, you mean? For quite some time, I believe.
A while.
Yes. And there are several different, different ones that you can join. So we're going to talk about another one in just a minute.
Move to approve the installation of Safety Vision's electronic visual and audio surveillance system on 40 of Tyler Bus Service school buses, as presented.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to resurfacing track and field.
Okay. If you see me checking my phone, I apologize, I've been communication. I'm going to bring on, if I can get in here, some representatives from the company that we've worked with on the track and field resurfacing. Sorry, we were having some electrical issues earlier. If this doesn't work, I will pull them up on my computer and turn around for you. Okay, we're having issues, of course, at the display board, so you're on my laptop. So I need to make you a little bit bigger when I pass this over. Okay. So I'm just going to go through and do my presentation, Jamison, and then I'll throw it to you for questions or anything else. If you can see the background, maybe it's a very nice background. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the resurfacing of the track and the field. So our current track is in need of resurfacing, and this was a project that we were going to do last summer. But COVID changed the world drastically, had a great impact on revenue streams, so it, the project had to be put on hold. And I think in the end, it was probably a blessing for us, because here we are talking about the track and the field. So our current field, our synthetic turf, turf field, was installed in 2007. The life expectancy of that synthetic turf was 10 years. So through the outstanding care of our coaches, our maintenance staff, just taking care of the field, we've been able to get almost four additional years out of it. But it is time to look at changing that, because we are beyond the life expectancy. So we have been talking to Vernon Jones Construction, and we have here on Zoom, Jamison, a representative of the company. So when I get finished here, I know you're going to have some questions, so he will help address some of those. Vernon Jones Construction, their sports division is part of a national purchasing cooperative called TIPS. Their proposal to upgrade our track and field is $5,595,371. So you see the track investment is about $99,000, the field investment is about $514,000. And the field investment includes the Shaw Momentum Pro synthetic turf. And Jamison, that has a life expectancy of 12 years, is that correct?
Yeah, so typically what we see, so something that's associated with this, um, to probably somewhere in the range, um, we usually tell somebody this to plan this to 10, and when the next, well, it wasn't surprising.
Okay. So thanks.
Can you also let Mike in, someone who remembers charging the laptop?
Yeah, Mike's on there too. Okay. We'll bring Mike in, and Mike is who Dr. Nix and I have been working on this project a lot. So anyway, the synthetic turf, and you'll see a picture in just a minute, a minute, the SG Center logo, alternating panels on the field, white end zones, 15-inch tall dragons, 15-inch tall St. Jen in the end zones, and then loyal and true in each of the sideline player coaches boxes. And again, I'm going to show you an image in a minute. Their package does have a 3% discount because we're doing the two projects together. And we're trying to get this project approved now, so it can be completed this summer, and we're trying to stay ahead of price increases, because we all know the increases that are happening in the construction industry, and those are coming to the synthetic turf industry too. So the funds for this purchase, since the turf field and the track were completed in 2007, the district has been setting aside $10,000 to $15,000 every year in a fund to address the resurfacing of both of these areas. So it currently has $465,000 sitting, setting. So that means that we would need to pay the rest of it with current $130,000 in local funds. That is very doable in this budget, this coming year's budget, especially with some of the work we're doing to try to incorporate SR2 and SR3, those, the other CARES Act funding coming to us. We're trying to incorporate it into salaries and benefits to free up some local money to do some small general maintenance type projects, and this is one of those projects that we're looking at. So I guess the big question of what everybody wants to see is, this is the image that we worked on and came up with for the. and came up with for the field. Like I said, I've been working through it, Dr. Nix has been working through it, he shared it with our football coaches, and they came up with the idea of putting the loyal and true in the coaches', players' boxes. And, I don't know, we're, we're very excited to see what this looks like. It's just, we feel like the loyal and true really makes it St. Gin's. Because, you know, it's just, I don't know, it just makes me so proud to see it. So this is the mock-up of what the resurfaced track and the field would look like upon completion. So, Mike, Jamison, do you want to talk about the actual field and the sand and the rubber pellets? A little bit of what, what that system's about?
Yeah, so you had mentioned, Dr. Flea, that there were some questions about all rubber versus the sand and rubber that we have on this proposal, if I'll, I'll address that. So 15 years ago, when you guys probably put your lab seal in, people were most concerned about avoiding concussions. That was kind of the main focus, because the, beneath that turf is a really hard surface of rock, so concussions were the main thing that was being focused on. Rubber at the time solved this, so they just said, you know what, let's throw rubber across the entire thing, that'll take care of the concussion issues. Fast forward to now, we've had years of research and data that show the vast majority of injuries on turf fields are actually lower body injuries, so knees, ankles, things like that. And what we found through that data is that the rubber fields, because they're squishy, it's kind of like running on a, on a beach, not the wet part, but the soft part of the beach. So after a while, you start to really feel fatigue in your lower body, and that leads to a higher injury rate. So the other thing with an all rubber field is that the rubber tends to grab onto those cleats. So when you're planting and then trying to pivot and release, the rubber won't let go of that cleat. And what that does is obviously leads to, you know, those ACL, MCL tears, an ankle, things like that. So anyone who's been through an ACL or a lower body injury like that, such as myself, can attest to how detrimental it can be to you and how the recovery process is brutal. So in recent years, a lot of research has gone into how to reduce those lower body injuries, and sand, adding sand to the infill is what we've come up with. And so the ratio is about 40 to 60, so 40, 40% sand, 60% rubber. And what that has shown to do is improve that plant and release category. So instead of you planting your foot, pivoting, and then trying to release, and it holds, and there's a delay, it releases immediately. So you're not having those as many ACL, MCL injuries. And with that 60% rubber, you still maintain that concussion protection. So we're able to get the best of both worlds there. The other thing that sand does is it improves ball interaction, and it also speeds up the game. So instead of running on all rubber, and you like running on sand, you have a little bit of sand in there that actually makes it easier to, to run quickly. That, that release, that plant and release is a little bit easier, so we'll see the game sped up a little bit. So does that, does that kind of make sense, Dr. Flea?
Yes.
Cars?
It does.
Okay.
Can you maybe also go through, like, general maintenance of the field?
Yeah, yeah, so, so it really will give you a schedule of, of when you need to be doing all these things. And Jamison actually may be able to talk better about the maintenance of a field. I'm going to turn it over to him for that.
So, thank you, Mike. On, on the maintenance piece of this, we give training to as many people as the school would like us to, on how to use the equipment to groom a field. And then we also tell you, as Mike said, we give you a schedule. So typically, what we see is about every six weeks of play, if you want to do a grooming. Grooming basically takes them out, the same amount of time as if you mowed it. And it's a very similar pattern in how you do it. Again, like I said, we, we spend time, we train, it's, it's about a two to four hour training, depending on how many people are there. And then also, if it's wanted, or it is wanted or warranted, we also do it. So if you want a professional doing it, that's fine too. But we're, we're trying to save the district some money and some headaches later on. I believe your last field only came with a sweeper. This field comes with an actual groomer. What it, what it does is it, it helps stand the fibers back up and re-level the infill. So that's really what the maintenance is for, is to make sure your infill is level, make sure your playing field is safe, and try to prolong the, the life of those blades to make sure they're still vertical and not horizontal and getting, basically crinkled like a leaf and then torn.
So I guess I'm going to turn it over to board members. Do you have additional questions?
Are these fields comparable to any professional teams, college teams, stadiums?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
That's okay. The question was, is the field comparable to college professional teams? Are you putting these systems, I guess, in on any of those fields?
Yes, short answer is yes. So the, the system that was most comparable to this was basically all of the Baltimore Ravens facilities have this type of system in, that we're proposing with Shaw. And I believe they've got, I think it's seven NFL practice facilities that have them, multiple Division Ones. Smaller than you guys, Hillsborough High School has this exact system. That, that can get you kind of an idea of, of a closer high school, and then some of the, the large-scale projects. They've, I think they've got this in about 400 to 500 facilities nationally.
And I think you said Southeast Missouri has one or two systems?
Yeah, so Southeast Intermural Facility is this, is this as well. Yes, ma'am.
We've seen significant concussions or sprains or one more than the other on the field that we have.
Okay, I'll take that question. We actually had a health professional attend the meetings that we had with Mike and Jamison, and so that person brought data with them. And what we've seen in the past few years with our players, the concussions that our students, our athletes are receiving are actually direct contact concussions, meaning they're hitting another player. We're not actually seeing players fall on turf in their head, having concussions, direct contact. And we have very few of those, but we are seeing, and we're getting the else, I think, as we all know, the ankle, the ankles, the lower body injuries.
So to, to your point there, we're privy to a lot of the Division One safety studies and the NFL safety studies, and they're, they're saying about 94% of concussions are a head to a body part and not the head to the surface. So it, it kind of backs up what you're seeing with your data as well.
Any other questions?
So gentlemen, you guys will continue to provide us with assistance if we need it as we roll this out, particularly in the first year?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, and I had talked to Dr. Flea and Dr. Nix about this, but we also have what's called the Green Team. Once you purchase a field through us, we add you to what's called our Green Team, which is an email list, and we'll send you reminders on when it's time for major work to be done in your field. So that kind of gives you a heads up, so in case you forget or, or anything like that, it's just a little reminder.
Thank you.
Dr. Nix, say it.
The only thing I have to add to that is, you know, the past several years, we started to become tired to think about resurfacing the turf. I started to talk to the athletic director, the head coach around the area, out of the school, that he's a part of, Jones's next for high school. It was amazing, we put extra wood after the new field was put in, and after the game, during the game, you see how beautiful it is, and colorful it is, and actually walk on that field. It's so noticeably different than our field now, just because our field is almost 14 years old. We thought about the grooming process and how it lifts those blades up. You go on our field now, those blades are laying down, and that is happening all the time. When I talked to the athletic director at Texas State and Hillsborough, one of my main questions was, what sort of service are we giving after the sale? That's an important piece of me, and that's an important piece to a lot of people here. And both schools said that the relationship with Vernon Jones after the sale, and that is Vernon Jones has been a great company to work with after the sale. And to me, that is, you know, I don't see the field, walking on the field, that was the biggest thing to me, was the fact that if you do have issues, if you do have questions, if you do have things pop up, Vernon Jones has been a great company.
The tracks at this segment is refinished, too?
The track, the approaches, resurfacing, respraying. Right, Mike?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The track, it's just resurfacing it, and it doesn't need a whole lot of repair.
Correct, correct. There are some, there are some repair spots, but it's, it's just going to be a resurface, a respray.
We have one track being closed, most separated, track between else from anybody else, as we look. We had one last week, and the hurles, you know, came up, hurles, ran the hurles, and the next thing to do when the hurles are finished, is you go to the hurles up, you go onto a different line. And I was out there moving the hurles to the next line, and I really had to look, I have to fish, but I really had to look for that line, because it's become so vague over the past 15 years. It's, it's not a resurfacing, the lines are vague. It's not as smooth and bouncy as a new track is. I think the line on the track is actually bigger than the line on the right side as well, but...
Well, and I'm not questioning your vision, but maybe. Probably so. We won't talk about that. So our proposal is that we refer to Vernon Jones at the resurface our track.
Yep, there'll be all new lines on there, too. We'll strive at everything afterwards as well.
Then Dr. Nix can see the lines.
I know you mentioned, we've saved $465,000 towards this, would it just be $130,000 additional?
Yes. My hope is to try and free up some local money with the SR funds that are coming in to try to maybe keep some of that $465,000 there, because eventually we're going to have to address the baseball softball. So that fund needs to be continued. And so if I don't have to complete it all for this project, I definitely want to keep adding to that. I want to, future superintendent needs to also do that, whoever that is.
So a weird question, can the turf now, can it, like, if you take it up, are you just going to pitch it? Or can you sell it, portions of it for things, you know, I don't know, maybe somebody would want to buy the SG and then, or auction it off or something? I don't know, I'm just...
I can promise you, I should promise you, I can tell you that from questions I've had since we put in this turf field in 2007, we would be able to sell all of it, most likely, with the kind of... I was asked all the time about extra turf. People just want to buy that, they want to, I think, their house, they want to put in a mound, they want to do things in their yard. And I have a feeling there's a lot of turf out there, about 33 yards west outside, there's a lot of turf on the desert. I have a feeling that people will be in line to get better turf for some.
Well, and I was at Farmington last week for the track meet, and they actually have part of their old turf, and they have it sections and they roll it up, but they have it just rolled out in a field, and I guess they use it for a practice field. I, I don't know if it's for what sport or what, but they just have it rolled out, you know, the, the lines don't match, but you can tell it's their old turf, they just have it rolled out in this big giant field. And they're using it, so...
I know it's in here too, but this day will be completed in time for football season next year.
This project would be completed in time for, hopefully, football camp.
Yes, absolutely.
We have the premier academics in our area, so we should certainly, you know, keep the premier athletic facilities for all, so that's just my opinion.
How does this compare?
Another question for us, I'm sorry, I can barely hear.
Hang on, hang on a second, Mike, sorry.
I'm sorry. I wish I could have been there tonight. We had a meeting in Kansas today, we, I just got home about 20 minutes ago.
How does this field compare to the field that we put in, that we first put in? Like, if we were...
Did you ask how this one compares to the one that you put in previously that we're replacing?
Yes, that is the question.
So that was an all rubber field. So kind of what I was talking about initially, that all rubber, while that protected against concussions, it was not protecting against lower body injuries. So this new field is going to have sand content in it, and that's going to help with those lower body injuries and also allow faster gameplay on top of it. And it's also the fiber use, the fiber use on the field is, is way nicer as well, should last longer.
Yeah, we've come a long ways in the last 12 years in what we know about the, the actual chemical composition of the plastic fibers that sit out in the sun every day. So we get better playability and better actual longevity out of the field functionally than we ever could have 10 or 15 years ago.
This is also a very durable product. The one that you chose was, was the most durable out of the options that we provided you.
So that was the best at that time?
When, when we installed the original field, that was the best at that time? That's the question. Or probably one of the better products?
I don't want to speak to it, because I was the second better on that job. I, I really shouldn't speak to that.
And we'll just let it go. I remember that.
You're really going to like this field. It is a high quality, this is going to be...
Better than the other one, right?
Yeah.
This is what I recommended for my alma mater to play on. Just, as a, as a heads up.
Yes, we're pretty excited. It's really, we played with some different options, with some grays, black lines. In the end, green and white, alternating panels, green and white, those are our colors. And I think Mr. Bogan said he even had a feeling it had kind of like an 80's throwback to it.
Yeah, it ended up really nice. It's always a challenge with white and green as school colors, and I think we came up with something really cool. You guys, it was all your guys' ideas. We just put together what you had, and it looks really nice. I have a pic, do you guys have a picture of it up there?
Yes, it's, I'm on a video display board.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions for possible vendors?
I'll be able to approve the resurfacing of the track and football field as presented.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Can you post? Who cares? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
There you go.
Gotcha.
We'll be in touch soon and get this going.
Sounds great. Have a good night.
You too. See you tomorrow. That is all that Dr. Taylor and I have to say.
I move that the Board of Education, for the closed meeting, with the closed record and the closed open following the regular open meeting on August 20, 2021, to be held in our St. Julie High School commentary, 715 Washington Street, St. Julie, Missouri, for purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees. Scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals. Preparation or negotiation with employee groups, individually identifiable personnel records, charmer ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. For the move that notice in this meeting and this tentative agenda being posted is required below.
Okay.
You vote for the second overall, Barry Bosman?
Yes.
Mr. Boba?
Yes.
Gary Diesel?
Yes.
Mr. Grichner?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhloff?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven all.
I move to go to a closed session with the closed record and the closed open following the regular open meeting on August 20, 2021, to be held in our St. Julie High School commentary, 715 Washington Street, St. Julie, Missouri, for purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees. Scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals.